Thank you, for the idea. I'd like to call to order Lady Chicago County Council regular meeting for Wednesday, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. Will you please stand for the one of the meetings?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, its citizens, our government, and the citizens of this country.
Roll call, please.
Second District Councilman Lenny Francis.
Present.
Third District Councilman Karen Hill.
Here.
Fourth District Councilwoman Stacy Winfield.
Present.
Fifth District Councilman Robert Garcia. Sixth District Councilwoman Gilda Orange. Councilwoman at large Deborah Bolanios.
Here.
Councilwoman at large Dwayne Ransford.
Here.
Councilwoman at large Kenneth Monroe.
Present.
Council President Margaret Gonzalez.
Here. Um, for the record, I did get a message from Councilman Garcia saying that he would not be able to attend today's meeting. Okay, minutes of the council meetings?
We have the minutes for the regular meeting Wednesday, August the ninth, year twenty-twenty-three. So, so we're going to present second.
Okay, motion made to accept the minutes by Councilman Franciskey, second by Councilman Hill. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Franciskey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yes.
Bolanios?
Yes.
Ransford?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes. Communication from the mayor?
I have none.
Communication from department heads?
We have a Councilman Warrens, zero-eight-one-zero-two-three C.C., zero-eight-one-one-two-three C.C., zero-eight-one-seven-two-three C.C., zero-eight-two-three-two-three C.C., and zero-eight-two-three-two-three L.A. So, one, second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Franciskey, second by Councilman Ransford. Oh, there you, I'm sorry, did you, I'm speaking, maybe I will just, this is sorry, Councilman, that's okay. Motion made by Councilman Hill, second by Councilman Ransford. Are there any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Franciskey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yes.
Bolanios?
Yes.
Ransford?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
We have, they were warned biweekly, zero-eight-one-eight-two-three. For move on, first, say.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Franciskey, second by Councilman Monroe. Any questions on the matter? Roll call, please.
Franciskey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yeah.
Bolanios?
Yes.
Ransford?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes. Are there any committee reports? Are there any board reports? Orders on first reading?
First ordinance, on first reading, ordinance twenty-three dash zero-zero-two-eight, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland. Mission of operations ordinance for Department of Special Events. For move on, first, second reading.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Hill, second by Councilman Ransford. And we have Natalie to come with special events to explain. Um, so these are for additional appropriations for events. I think the first one was ready for the events, not for Christmas, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this is for events that would carry us through the end of the year. Um, it was more than that when he came to you, um, a little over thirty days ago, um, but we had some time in the past. And other events have already been moved through, so we were able to reduce the ads. We did add a couple of items in here, though, that were not included on the first ad, which was the trunk or treat and the toy drive, which predominantly gets paid for out of park department. Um, but looking over my notes, we do purchase some items every year, and that's the hay bales and the corn stalks and the pumpkins and, uh, the hot chocolate and hot cider or whatever. So there are volumes that do get put in there for both of those events from special events, not out of parks. And it had not been included in the previous ad, so it did get added in there. Um, other than that, there's no changes to what was submitted previously.
What's the total amount?
The total amount of this ass this time is seventy-four thousand a week?
Yes.
Forty-four was ninety, it was ninety-three. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Councilwoman Williams?
Uh, can you explain again, item B, other services and charges for thirty thousand dollars that you have there? Is there, is there like a breakdown of what you're spending on each event?
No, we don't have a breakdown on each event because we don't, without the funding, we don't fully plan the event. Um, so as it says there on the, it's gifts, um, any promotional material, um, like for the toy drive and stuff, take out of this one, we can buy the pumpkins and, uh, I'm not sure about the hot chocolate and things of that nature. It depends on, so like other operating supplies is a very limited thing that you can buy from. You can get more out of other services and charges, and that's all dictated by the controller's office. So if we want to order anything that we want to put the City of East Chicago name on, that has to come out of other services and charges. So all gifts, whether it's for Veterans Day, for the senior Christmas party, even for some of the Christmas toy drive items, if they're personalized, they give the city's name on it, City of East Chicago. So that has to go into that type of, uh, versus like contractual. Councilwoman Bolanios, do you have any other questions?
No, that's it.
Councilman Monroe?
Yeah, this is going off first reading, uh, Miss Natalie. If you could have a breakdown for us, uh, so we do find a vote on both of these.
I can give you a breakdown on the previous year, but until we have the funds, I don't go out there and get quotes from, I don't even know what we're gonna order. I don't, I don't know what we're gonna order, because I don't have to know how much money I have to spend. Council, Councilwoman, Council, Ransford.
But if you base it off what you're asking for, can you, that as a starting point, ask that, okay, I'm asking for thirty thousand. It'll, if approved, that thirty thousand will be used for X, Y, Z versus just saying, I don't know how to do this for. I think that'll kind of help the council.
So in addition to saying it would be forgiven for cards, you want to know if we buy gifts, how much we're gonna spend on the gift?
Or for each event, just say, you know, for this Christmas, two thousand, just break it down. I think that's what the council is asking.
Okay, let me see how I can break that down further.
Let, just assume that you want to get this request of thirty, how would, how would you use it? Try to get those.
Councilwoman, that was, that was my standing request about, I know veterans is almost the smallest event. So, it is, what are you doing for the veterans, because that's a small event. So like they're saying, breaking it down, veterans, we're spending, say, two thousand dollars on gifts, refreshments, you know, something like that, and the Christmas, we know that's your biggest event. So we're spending this on entertainment, which you broke down on that part. But each event, what are you, the expenses, whatever you, because you based off of what you did last year, so that's a starter. And then this year, it might go up a little bit, maybe you may not use as much, because you said you didn't use as much this year.
Right. Council, Councilman Hill?
Yeah, I think that'd be easier for us to pass and see what's going on.
Okay, I can do that. Okay, do I just wait and send it with your packet, or would you want that emailed in advance?
You put it in advance.
Yeah, you, yeah, you have to email it in advance, because if this is packing on first and second reading, there's only one more, so you need to email it, so this would happen. Okay. Okay, I have a couple of comments. The first comment is that these events happen every year. Every year, same events since, at least, I mean, for a while now. I'm wondering why this wasn't included in your budget of it. In my opinion, no department should be coming to us every year or every so often to ask for money if it's already included in your budget. And again, these things happen every year. The second thing is that Councilman Garcia, well, can you answer that for me? Why wasn't it included in your budget? Oh, it was included in my ass. My ass that goes to the administration, it wasn't all included. And then when it comes back to me, it gets reduced. By whom? By Jim Bennett, and he does that because, or what he tells me is, he has to wait until they have certain funds go. That's what he says. Now, I mean, but that happens in our departments as well. I mean, this, this special events is something a little different, you know, as far as, you know, the marina versus parks versus something else. That same thing happens in our departments. I might ask for a certain amount for the marina. And when it comes back to me, it's been reduced, because you can only add, they, on, I don't know, gaming taxes, whatever, I don't know what this formula is. I can only tell you what I do. That's when I send it, it has the full ass. Comes back reduced. I just think that, um. It would certainly make my ID there. Well, yeah, and, and, and if you had, if there was actual breakdown, because like I said, these are not new events. And you're asking for a certain amount of money for Veterans Day, and it's a larger money, when I know, because I used to post, I used to be a part of that. Oh, I used to run those when the mayor first came into office, and there's no way that we, I mean, everything's pretty much volunteer. The only thing that we pay for is the brief. We've never bought any gifts. This last time, there was a breakfast, and it was like twenty people, so I just don't see, that's why I'd like to see a breakdown, so that. No, uh, one year we did buy some fifty chains and handed those out. Um, but we, last year we did do the breakfast, um, and it was more than twenty people, but I think twenty people is all we arranged for. But whoever, there was extra people at the, does he go, and they came to, and we didn't reduce that, so they increased the bill that they invoiced me for, but I mean, I didn't share what they invoiced, whatever they invoiced is what they. Um, we were trying to see if, uh, there's some monuments that used to be up around the city that, like there used to be one at the corner of Washington Park, Irish and a hundred and, whatever that is. Forty-second, there used to be something there that talked about some veterans and stuff. We were trying to find if some has major pictures of it duplicated, but it hasn't happened, so that could probably be removed. We didn't know what that would cost, so recreate those, uh, maybe in stone and put those over here at Veterans Park as well. So there has been some conversation, they'll try to do a few more things for Veterans Day, uh, but. And that would be great if they would communicate that to us. Well, I'd like to communicate to you what, what's, what's not sure. I mean, I, I, you know, those are conversations with residents, with people, getting information, but I haven't been able to bring it to fruition, so I don't want to throw some, pass something out there that may not happen. Right, but you come, you're asking for the money for that, so even if it's an idea, even if it's something that you need for us to advocate for, it just makes, that just makes sense to me. But, um, Attorney Jones, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just want to be clear for purposes of the public and the council. You put forth your budget last year, and you sent it to Jim Bennett and the mayor. And this was included, your plans for the veterans, events and special events, those were included in your original maps, is that correct?
That's the way. And it's not so much the veterans, the veterans that she did, a very small amount, so we probably, you know, through whatever funds are left, because we start spending money, a lot of time there's money left, but whatever doesn't get spent, it goes back. So like even money that we might have had for music fest, if we had two thousand dollars that we didn't spend in line, I would, I could take care of that. I just have to look at all of that, but, but there is a fuller budget, I don't want to say it's for specific items. There's a, a full budget done at the, end of the previous year, just like with every department.
Yep.
And those budgets get adjusted based on what he can afford to do.
That's what you understand.
That's, that's what I'm told.
But I, to be clear, I guess the answer to my question is, yes, you included these annual events in the budget request to the mayor's office. And the mayor reduced your budget request, and now you're forced to come before the council for things like veterans and Christmas, um, and kids' toy drives. Because you lost that in your budget request to the mayor.
Well, I might not be able to serve hot chocolate, but the toy drive will go on, that's done out of park department, as I stated. So the toy drive, the Halloween thing, all that's done out of the park department. There's very small items that we, every year, special events that, your park department, let us help you. We'll get your hot chocolate, we'll buy some pumpkins, we'll buy some hay. So those drives will go on, with or without this special event money, so.
I just want to be clear, because I think the council's going to be asking department heads to communicate with the council about the upcoming needs for twenty-twenty-four. And I think it would be helpful for this council to see your original budget requests, so that this council can evaluate um, and be better prepared for additional appropriations, and will know at that point that you asked for it originally, and it was declined or reduced.
Well, I also think we had all of this discussion last year, I mean, the last year. We had these discussions about, how was I coming last year, asking for additional money? Yes, it was included in my original budget, even in other departments. Except for a, a lot of times, you, um, I've been told that the council has reduced the budget, and that's not true. It was not us. It was Jim Bennett and the administration, but the, the administration being the mayor. Well, for some departments, Public Works, you reduce the budget. Well. Exactly. So I'm just saying, so it just depends on, which I don't know you're talking about, I'm not, I can't just say, that, that, if, even with the marina. I don't think you reduce my, but I don't think he reduced my. Special event. But this was reduced. Well, yeah, and special events would have to be reduced, because if you don't get enough funds, then the first thing you're gonna look to in special events, that's a, that's a feel-good thing to do. It would be inappropriate for him to give us money that he can't afford to give us, until he knows he can afford to give it to us for a special event, not for water. I said, no, I just said that, okay, you're asking for seventy-four thousand dollars, and we have a hundred and eighteen million, so I don't think that's a lot to ask for. I don't think, I mean, I'm just telling you, and you're, you're, you're breaking that up, and I'm thinking, you're asking for seventy-four thousand dollars, but the mayor said, oh, well, we can't spend that, because we only have a hundred and eighteen million, but that's okay. So let's go ahead and, um. Yeah. And so make natural, sorry.
Question. Why are we don't spend enough for adventure?
We.
I mean, that's a real meaningful thing.
I'm not gonna say we don't spend enough, we don't get a lot of veteran, last year, or was it maybe even two years ago? We don't get much veteran participation. We even reached out to the Veterans Association of Indiana, Illinois, trying to get addresses and locate. They will not provide you with that information. They went into a crime point, they will not give you anyone's address or anything. Then we put something on the city website, asking people just to register with us, let us know you're a veteran, I have served, you have served. That's been on the city website for two years, you don't think people did anything, too? It's hard to get, so when the ones do come, we get their information, so we're growing that database, we have about twenty-five days. Post three-six-nine and post five-oh-eight, post three-six-nine recently left us. They don't even come and participate anymore, five-oh-eight, they don't meet anymore, but they still come and participate. Most of those organizations, or at least those two, I can speak of, the people who still participate are really up in age. And they just don't, they don't, they don't do a lot.
I, I understand that, all right.
We're trying to get in with, uh, they do a big motorcycle thing, we're trying to talk to them, uh, we do that every year. We went to park to try to get information.
The thing I'm looking at right now, uh, even if we had ten veterans show up, the public should be there. Public should know strongly about it, instead of our website, this should be on flyers or something. It's, it's a thing of appreciation to me.
Well, I mean, so, everything we do, we inform the public the same way. And you want us to start mailing things to people's homes that gets possibly, but everything we do, it's usually in that EC life, it's in that cycle. It's on those electronic boards. We put the signs up on the corners throughout the city. Uh, I, it's, it's sometimes tougher than the water view. It's the, the little nixle alert that you get on your phone. So we hit the public in every avenue that we can send it. Now, if you guys have some other options for us to help, we tried to do something big at the beach one year for the veterans, we just didn't get much return on it. When I sit and talk to the veterans that do come, they're just like, Natalie, it's just not, we, we have several veterans that we know in East Chicago, they never come to our stuff. And when I ask them, it's like, I just don't want to. But I, yes, I'm a veteran, but no, I, I don't want to do that, I don't want to forget.
I was just looking at more appreciation.
I, I hear you, but if you got some, some other suggestions, well, we'll do it.
Councilwoman. I think, uh, if you start recognizing them, say, in, say, your council meetings, and giving plaques for something, and register, we want to recognize our veterans these day, and you give them stuff, you gotta give them something. And once they start seeing you're giving something other than what's happening on Veterans Day, you give, we are veterans in the back. If you give them, uh, something that you, they, they, he can say, I know exactly what you can give a veteran, and they would, like, and they would start coming.
Well, that's what we tried to do when we started with the thing on the internet, and we did honor a veteran, I think, um, it was last year, the year before, it was a hundred and something years ago, we honored, we, we sent that out to the veterans we knew, asking that, if they had other veterans, if they knew other veterans, we wanted to honor as many of them as we could. We don't get responses. I'm not, I can't sit here and let y'all act like we're not sending it out there, because we are. And people do not respond, for whatever reason, they don't. One of the things that I'd like to see, and this is just, uh, my opinion, in Highland, they have, um, on the flags, on the light poles, they have pictures of their veterans on there, which is really nice. And, and I'm sure it's the people who, you know, their parents, their grandfathers, their fathers, their brothers, whatever. And I would like to see that, but. They have been in Highland, and they also have that at Whible Park, that's what I reached out to, to see how did they get those people's names? How did they get those people's photos? And they do not want to share that information, so if you have somebody. Well, and, and that's what they, we see, because I know my husband signed up for correspondence, so we'll see if he gets it. He's signed up a couple of years ago, so we'll see if that database is still going, and, I mean, and that's just a test. So if he doesn't get anything, then we know there's a flaw somewhere, and we need to re-up our database, yes.
I bet if you put their pictures on those posts, you'll have families call and say, hey, my dad was a veteran, my grandfather was a veteran. If they see those pictures going on those posts, I guarantee you that's gonna start showing.
That's, that's good, right. And you can say, I mean, and, I mean, going on, if you could just start easy, easy, and just ask anybody who's an employee an email saying, do you have a picture of a, of a relative of yours that is born and raised in East Chicago and served by living in East Chicago? And start from there. All right, are we done? I'm sorry. All right, so, um, we are voting on first reading for ordinance twenty-three zero-zero-two-seven. Oh, no, wait, I'm just, voting on ordinance twenty-three zero-zero-two-eight. First and second reading, it was motioned by, it motioned by Councilman Hill, second by Councilman Ransford, correct? Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
Franciskey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yeah.
Bolanios?
No.
Bolanios?
No.
Ransford?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
No. Motion passes. Next ordinance.
Ordinance twenty-three dash zero-zero-two-nine. Sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland, additional appropriations ordinance for Department of Special Events, citywide Christmas decoration. For move on, first, second reading. Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Hill, second by Councilman Ransford. Go ahead, Miss Natalie. Um, so this one did not change at all, the same dollar amount for the tax for, a little over a month ago. Um, this one I had given breakdown to every park and where the park was seen. I don't know if you still have that, I can just send that back out before, I mean, if you like, but it came with the first package. Do you have any questions?
Is it broken down?
Yeah. In the first package, it was, it's broken down by park, in, in the first package meeting, a little over thirty days ago. So it wasn't resubmitted this time? I wasn't sure what I was supposed to do with that, so I can, I could email you that tomorrow. It's broken down by community center, by parks. Uh, and then other areas that we just called special event areas, but they don't, so like, uh, the monument sign in Guthrie Street, I mean, it's, it lists the naming street. Yeah, Water Department, all of that, the North Harbor sign. So it's, it's breaking, it's broken down to every location. Do you have any questions? Roll call, please.
Franciskey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yeah.
Bolanios?
No.
Ransford?
No.
Monroe?
Yeah.
Gonzalez?
No. Motion passes. Or this is on second reading?
We have none.
Or this is on third reading?
We have none.
Any resolutions?
We have none.
Um, old business.
Can we re, resurface the overriding veto from last meeting? It's gotta be, we need to get this done.
Yes.
I was hoping we'd have a full council, but, eh, we've got to move that forward.
Okay.
So if that could get voted on, I appreciate it.
Does anybody have any old business before I bring that up? No? Okay, I would like a motion to bring ordinance two-two-zero-zero-four-three, um, off the table. It was tabled, and it was fixing the salary for police and fire. The correction was being made so that, uh, police and fire would get five thousand dollar residency bonus as motion by Councilwoman Orange. So if I can get a motion for it.
First, I make a motion to, uh, bring back, uh, ordinance two-two-zero-zero-four-three, please.
Just point of order, it's, I believe the motion, the ordinance passed, we're just on the, the motion to override the veto.
So I don't have to break that it wasn't tabled?
No, the override of the veto vote was tabled, but that motion, as far as I'm aware, passed. And then the mayor vetoed it, and the vote needed to be had on the overriding of the veto.
Okay.
So if we could just correct the motion.
Okay, so the motion is to override the veto on two-two-zero-zero-four-three. Bringing that one off the table.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you, okay.
I think the motion, now, first, say.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Franciskey, second by Councilman Monroe. Roll call, please.
Franciskey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yes.
Bolanios?
Yes.
Ransford?
Yes.
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes. Okay, now I need a motion to override the veto on two-two-zero-zero-four-three.
First, I make a motion to override the veto on ordinance two-two-zero-zero-four-three, say.
A motion made by Councilman Franciskey, second by Councilman Monroe. Questions? Roll call, please.
Franciskey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yes.
Bolanios?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes, motion passes. Any other old business? Any new business? Councilwoman Winfield?
Just like I was, and invite everyone to come out to my set, my annual unity in the community picnic this Sunday at Sunnyside Park. Uh, all is invited for three, same twenty-eight and fourth issue. But of course, everyone is invited. Asking all my colleagues to be with us up in and have a little fun. We're playing one and four P M.
Anybody else have any new business? Um, I do, I just want to recognize, um, Harrison Elementary School. They, um, increased their reading scores for, uh, some of the students there. I wanted to congratulate, uh, the principal, Linda Padilla, uh, the teachers, the parent professionals, everybody who goes in there, and they are really a big family over at Harrison. So I would like to say congratulations to them. Okay. No other expression? Do I have a motion for, motion made by Councilman Hill? Their second, seconded by Councilman Winfield. Roll call, please.
Oh, yeah. Bill?
We'll stay where they know everyone, so, yes.
Winfield?
Yeah.
Bolonio?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Monroe?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.